Going to go ahead and call this Tuesday, January 3 meeting of the Whitefish City Council to order. We are meeting both in person and remotely via Teams. Thanks everyone for coming to join us in person tonight. And we'll start with our pledge of allegiance. And it would be my honor, Dylan, for one more time, if you would lead us, please.
United States of America.
Thanks, Dylan. We will move on communications from the public. We do not have any public hearings advertised for this evening. So if you have anything to bring to the attention of the council now, it'd be your opportunity and just name and record, name and address for the record, please, when you approach the podium. Quite all right?
My name is Roxanna Chomis. I am the new chief plant operator at the wastewater facility that you guys just upgraded.
Welcome.
And I always like to have a name to the face. I have just a little bit of a write-up that I did for myself. It may look like I'm balding, but... I just wanted to again introduce myself. And, boy, you guys have a really, really nice plant out there. It's absolutely beautiful. And the gentlemen that have been running it, they're just, they're very great at their jobs, and they've taken me on board, and I'm excited to be part of their team. I won't take up much of your time. That's all I needed to say. Nice to meet all of you, and thank you for having me.
Welcome to the city.
Thank you.
We'll have to come out for a tour.
Please do.
Yeah, I'd love that. Thanks.
Warmer weather.
Yes, we'll wait for the summer. Further comments from the public tonight? Not seeing any? Any volunteer board reports, or anyone online, Michelle, for that matter? Any volunteer board reports from the council? Dylan, excuse me.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Mollfeld, city council, city staff. My name's Dylan Dean Boyle. I'm the executive director of the Whitefish Convention and Visitors Bureau, which is a volunteer committee of the city of Whitefish. And as I was walking over here, I realized that I have addressed many of you in three different council chambers in almost a decade now. So while that's not an incredible long time, that's still quite a few, quite a few meetings and presentations. As many of you know, I have been named the new president and CEO of Visit Bellingham, Wacom County, out on the coast in Washington. So my last day at Explore Whitefish will be next Friday, January 13. It's certainly very bittersweet for me. I'm so honored and proud of the accomplishments during my tenure at Explore Whitefish. We've done a very good job of building shoulder-season business while also making decisions on a community-first basis. The partnership between Explore Whitefish and the city is one that is a model, and I've been told countless times over how special that this partnership truly is. And what I'm most proud of is the work that we have done when we've been challenged the most, by standing up together in partnership against hate, navigating the pandemic through the Whitefish COVID cares program, and also through the development and the implementation of the Whitefish Sustainable Tours and Management Plan. I think we've all come together in an extremely wonderful and collaborative fashion. I think we really all truly are friends of the fish as a result of all the work that we've done in the most challenging times. And I think that's what I'm most proud of. I certainly won't be a stranger, and I will always be a champion for Whitefish. And I hope that whomever comes in next as the director of Explore Whitefish receives the same warm welcome that I did from you all almost a decade ago, and hope that continued partnership continues well into the future. It has been just my absolute honor to be involved, and thank you all so much for your partnership and support.
Thanks, Dylan. You should be very proud of the work you've done here. And we're certainly proud of you and appreciate all your efforts over the last 10 years, because I've been up here the whole time. And I agree with you wholeheartedly. We've done some really great things for this town, and you take a lot of the responsibility for that. So thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Mollfeld. It's been my pleasure.
Likewise. We'll move on to our consent agenda. You have the minutes from the December 19 closed executive session, as well as the regular meeting in your packet. Any changes or additions?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion is unanimous. We have no public hearing scheduled for this evening. So we'll move to item seven, communications from Dana Smith, our city manager. You have Dana's report enclosed with the packet. Any questions for our city manager? Dana, anything else to report on?
I have two items, maybe three. There is a correction to my report. I did misspell Robin Turner's name. I left the R out, so just for the record. And then I had an email from the League of Cities and Towns. They have contracted with a media consultant to help drive a push against preemption in the rash of bills that we've seen and expect to see this session that are aimed at taking away local decision-making authority. Regardless of our position or topic on any items, obviously, being able to make decisions at the local level affecting our residents is very important to the city of Whitefish. They have asked to see if there were any communities that would participate in sharing the cost of this. Media consultant, right now, they do have a grant request in, but they have yet to hear back. With the cost of about $51,000, it'll be about $5,000 per community if 10 communities were to step forward and support the media push. So far, three communities have, I think it was Butte, Silver Bow, Great Falls, and Bozeman. And I'm sure we'll see more come through as well. So my question for the council this evening, given that our lobbying budget has been absorbed with our contract with Turner Strategies, do you want to, you know, commit to the League of Cities and Towns to work on this media plan to try to push against preemption?
My opinion is yes. I think we've been good partners with the league, and I think they've reached out to us, and I think it's an important move for very little cost to the city.
I concur.
Other thoughts?
I concur.
Rebecca?
Yeah, I think it's one of those issues that if it happens, you don't know until it's too late. And I think we need to get ahead of it and educate people about what they could lose if we lose local control. So I'm very much in favor of that. Thanks, Dana.
Further comments from the council? Head nods all around. Okay.
Great. And that's great, given that there are 4,117 unintroduced bills and 293 already introduced bills for this session. So it is kicking off to be a very busy legislative session. Obviously, we know those 4,000 bills won't all come forward, but we are already tracking some bills, some positive, and some, obviously, negative bills that we will oppose. So I'm working very closely with Robin. She's been very great at communicating with me on a daily basis or as needed, and we have a regular meeting scheduled through this session. So with that, that is all I have for my manager's report.
Thanks, Dana. We'll move on to item 7C, Resolution 23-2, a resolution establishing the Whitefish Community Housing Committee. And this appears on page 37 of the packet.
Well, thank you. As you know, we had the Whitefish Strategic Housing Plan that was adopted in 2017. Since then, we established the Strategic Housing Plan Steering Committee. That committee actually sunset at the end of this past year, so December 31. And that we knew about, given that we just have the newly adopted Whitefish Community Housing roadmap that recommends that there be some changes to the actual housing committee. And we discussed that at the December 2022 meeting of the committee, what the composition of that committee may look like to help improve our community engagement and expertise of committee members. The previous housing steering committee had a significant representation from city staff and elected officials. And so we are looking at replacing some of those positions with those with the proper expertise for addressing housing in our community. And not to, that came out way wrong, but to provide more expertise that is more specific. So the Housing Steering Committee recommended a nine-member committee with the following positions, and I did leave out that we have one mayor or city council position. On the resolution, it is correct. Then we would have one representative from the housing authority, one representative from Housing Whitefish, one representative from the Whitefish Chamber of Commerce, and one representative from the Whitefish Convention and Visitors Bureau. We also would include one member of the public with relevant professional or personal expertise in real estate development, and then one member of the public that has professional or personal expertise in fundraising or financing, and then two members of the public that are more in general have backgrounds in housing policy or property management, housing programs. They may be end users of community housing or housing advocacy. To ensure that the communication to the community is consistent with our roadmap, the Housing Steering Committee recommended changing the name of the committee to the Whitefish Community Housing Committee. So a very simple name. There are no financial requirements to this change, but we have, this will establish the committee for one year. There was discussion of making this a standing committee, but we decided to see how this committee would work over the next year before making that decision or recommendation. So with that, staff and the Whitefish Strategic Housing Plan Steering Committee respectfully recommends that the city council adopt the proposed resolution to establish the Whitefish Community Housing Committee.
Dana, one quick question, a point of clarification. Section four of the resolution comprising the makeup of the committee conflicts with the staff report?
Which part of it?
In terms of the makeup?
Where the council member, when I missed the council member on my staff report.
Okay, so it does include...
That should be added on my staff report. There's only eight positions on my staff report, so I somehow left out the one position for the mayor elected official.
No, that's quite all right. I just wanted to make sure the resolution was correct.
Yes, that is correct.
Questions? Steve?
Yeah, I just have a question about, it seems at some point we need to figure out what we're going to call our housing, because we've called it, we call it so many different things that I don't, I think the message gets lost. We've called it affordable housing. We've called it workforce housing. We've called it inclusionary housing or zoning. And now we have another one called community housing. Is there a way we can, can we change the name of this committee if we decide at some point that we're going to focus our message on one of these adjectives at some point?
So community housing was a description of what kind of housing we're looking for that the group worked together on, that had community members, staff, city council, to do the update. And I think they felt that the affordable housing or workforce housing was too limited, and that there could be a bigger description of what housing in Whitefish looks like. I think we will be set with this community housing terminology for a very long time. I do, this is a resolution, so it can be amended with future resolutions, and it will sunset in a year if we don't make any changes, so.
Yes. My only question is on section three, page 37, we say the specific purpose of the committee will be to implement the housing strategies that are responsibility of the city. My question is, they don't have a budget. And so how do they implement? Shall we say advise, deliberate, vote upon, rather than implement?
Sure. Yeah, this was from the previous resolution. I mean, to me, the terminology would be to make recommendations.
Perfect.
To implement, make recommendations to the city council to implement the strategies.
Everyone okay with that change?
Yep.
I'd entertain a motion to that effect. Giuseppe?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the Resolution 22-02 with the friendly amendment as discussed.
23-2 would be the correct number.
Oh, sorry. 23-02. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Those opposed, like sign, and that motion does carry unanimously, Michelle. And we'll move on to Resolution 23-3, approving the mortgage securing Whitefish Lake Golf Course's financing with Glacier Bank to fund the remodel and update of the clubhouse. And I'll just acknowledge that Terry and a representative from Glacier, they are both here. If there's any questions for Terry, and I forget your name, I apologize, but we met in a housing meeting about a year ago.
Ryan Porter.
Ryan, that's right. Good to see you. Dana?
So in 2011, the city council approved a lease through December 31 of 2040 with the Whitefish Lake Golf Club Incorporated to operate the Whitefish Municipal Golf Course and other facilities, such as the clubhouse, the pro shop, the maintenance field, the restaurant bar, and other miscellaneous facilities. On June 6 of this last year, the city council approved the request from Whitefish Lake Golf Club to remodel and upgrade the existing clubhouse in excess of $200,000 in accordance with the lease. To complete the remodel and the upgrade of the existing clubhouse, Whitefish Lake Golf Club Incorporated has requested that they be able to secure their financing with the city-owned land and facilities, known as to us the Whitefish Lake Golf Course, up to $1.5 million. The mortgage documents are attached as Exhibit A of the proposed resolution. While there are no direct costs to the city for the execution of the loan and related documents, there is some financial risk should a default occur, having had the city property be a means of security. Obviously, as we have with the wave, we have done similar agreements and allowed them to secure loans with our assets. I do believe, though, based on the financial history of the Whitefish Lake Golf Course operations, that default would be highly unlikely. And so with that, if you have any questions for Terry, I'm sure he'd be happy to share information. Yeah.
Do you mind to come up to the podium, Terry, please? Thanks, just so you get on the record. Thanks.
My name is Terry Nelson, 170 La Barline. Just to clarify that, really, we're really not asking to put the land up as security, just the lease. So, the wording was not right.
Yep, Ryan Porter. I'm with Glacier Bank. This document that you guys have in your packet just encumbers the lease. We have a whole other, you know, chunk of collateral we're taking. It's just sound banking practice. If the golf course did default, we would want to be able to run the golf course as a whole. And since the clubhouse and a lot of the maintenance facilities are located on the city property, we're just wanting to, you know, be able to take over the lease, receive the rents, and run the course as a, as a whole.
Great. Thanks, Ryan. Thanks for the clarification. Any questions for Terry Ryan from the council? Steve?
Yeah, the only question I have is that, as someone who once got a loan from Glacier Bank, and my loan was subsequently sold to another lender, would you, would you be continuing to hold this lease or this, or this loan, or would it also be sold to another lender that would then?
This is in the commercial department, so we will service this loan. We'll make all the disbursements. It'll be with Glacier Bank, me personally, the entire life of the loan.
Steve, excuse me. It's also a cooperative loan between Glacier Credit Union and the First Interstate. They're all involved.
Rebecca?
Could you just explain a little bit what you're, what you're actually doing to the building and?
The remodel that we're doing is a section of the, of the golf course that was the bag storage area. So we're not changing the footprint. The footprint will stay exactly as it is. We are adding a second floor. And the, what we don't have now are offices, office space for our head professional, general manager, or Doug Reed, if you know where his office is. It's barely a closet. So they will have office space. One of the things that we've done over the years is bag storage for our members. And we have 86 members who use that out of 18, out to 1,850. So it's a poor use of about 2,000 square feet. So we're going to improve that use of that square footage. We're going to put in golf simulators, which offers our members something to do in the off-season as well. And it's a revenue source for us, too. There are also some, some changes that will be made that will allow for the kitchen staff to have easier access to the deck and to the lounge without having to go carry their tray through the dining room and around the bar. If you've been in there, you know what that's like. So that, that's part of this process. So it's efficiencies for them, and it will end up increasing the workspace in the kitchen for the staff, too. So that's, that's in a nutshell.
Thanks for the overview, and thank you for everything you've done out there.
Yep.
For all those years. Absolutely.
One question. Is the golf simulator closed for the season, for the winter at least?
No, the, the other one we have now is, is open. Yes. It's up in a different building.
Craig?
Is there, is there a hint there for Craig?
We're supposed to play.
Can we make a tea time now?
Thanks, Terry.
You bet.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Good luck with the project. Motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 23-03. They proposed the resolution to approve the mortgage securing the Whitefish Lake Golf Course's financing with Glacier Bank to fund the remodel and update of the clubhouse.
Thank you, Giuseppe. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Quinell. Further discussion?
Yeah, just one comment. They've had the renderings in the lounge area for quite some times, a couple of months, and they look fantastic. So I cannot wait.
Frank, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand, and those opposed, like sign, and that carries unanimously. Thanks for joining us tonight, and good luck with the project, Terry. We'll move on to item 8A. We have a letter from FCD requesting to extend Angela Jacobs' urban supervisor term until a replacement is found. We'll just need a motion to that effect, assuming you're okay with that, Ange.
I assume so, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Yeah, I am fine with that, kind of with the caveat that if it's, they don't find with anyone within the next couple of months, I will probably resign that position. It has been extremely interesting, very informative, but it has also resulted in a Monday meeting every Monday since October. So, and they, they tend to go a little bit late, too. So, yeah, I told them, and again, it's been super informative. They're a great group of people. But if something doesn't come along, probably by the end of January, end of February, I'm probably going to need to resign that just because of the time commitment, so.
Thanks for doing that. Michelle, a quick question. Are we posting for two urban supervisor positions? That was a request from Samantha.
That's a good question. I'm trying to remember my ad here.
I didn't realize we had two representatives.
Yes, we are. Yeah, because of John Ellis.
That's right.
John decided, they thought that John wanted to serve his term again, but she didn't really ask him until time came to where he said he was not going to. So both of us are advertising for that, those two positions, the FCD, and then we are.
Great. Thank you. We'll need a motion to that effect, I believe. Rebecca?
I make a motion to approve Angela Jacobs and John Ellis for another term on the Flathead Conservation District, ending 12/31/23. No, 20...
I believe John's stepping down, Rebecca. He's just willing to serve for a few more months.
All right, but I think we, this letter says that we have to reinstate both of them. And then they, once we find their replacements, then they will step down. So we have to approve two of them, and then anybody out there that likes water issues, please apply.
Thanks, Rebecca.
I think one thing that I didn't realize about the Conservation District, when I accepted the position, which is neither here nor there, is we actually go out and do, we act as staff. We go out and do site visits and look at rivers. And again, it has been fascinating, but just a time commitment with this job, and the kids, they can't really keep up. But Rebecca, you're right. We have to appoint us for the entire, for the entire time. And then when we find somebody else, we just resign our position.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Sweeney. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand, and that's unanimous as well. We'll start with counselor comments this evening. And why don't we start right to left? Giuseppe, you have comments tonight?
No comments.
Thank you. Steve?
Just a quick question for Dana. Deidra Heaton reached out to me about fundraising for their new building for the North Valley Music School. And she asked me to see what the process is for that. And I talked to Wendy today, and Wendy said that it's something that has to go through the city manager. So...
I'm, I'm having a hard time with that one, I will say. They have requested to place sandwich board signs for the music school fundraising throughout town for over a year. I've never approved a temporary sign that would be like that. So I will reach out to her and discuss, like, what is possible, based on what their initial request was. But I just hadn't gotten to it, because I was trying to get the annual financial report out with Laney and other stuff before, for holidays.
All right. Thanks.
Yeah. So Steve, I'll follow up on it, too, because I have spoken with her, and Dave and I kind of went back and forth and back and forth about signs being placed on private property, how we kind of looked at it as, as long as they're not, you know, the signs kind of look like fun, but they kind of don't. They're just like, be instrumental. She did, I think, at one point, want to put barcodes on them so people could scan and donate. And I think Dave and I told her, well, I told her, no. If you're going to place on a private property, it's kind of freedom of speech sort of thing. But I also told her that, you know, Dana would have to approve anything on public property. We don't usually do it for long periods of time.
Okay. Thank you. Other than that, I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and hope you all had a wonderful holiday season, and back to work.
Came quickly.
Yeah.
Frank?
The only comments I've got are really questions. Craig, you probably heard it from a number of people. What, if anything, can be done now to fix the state of our streets, given the levels of snow, slush, and other things that didn't get picked up?
Yeah, so we're, we're kind of stuck with this one for a little bit. We had, I guess, what I'd call kind of a trifecta of weather events that hit us. You know, we had a really snowy December that had, you know, one of the coldest weeks on record. That was immediately followed up by one of the warmest weeks on record. And just to put a little icing on top of that, we got 24 hours' worth of rain right after that. And so, oh, and just for a little more icing, it also came the day after Christmas, when a third of my staff was out of town. So we did everything we could, beginning late in the day on the 26th of December. But the issue that we were dealing with was, as the weather warmed up in the couple of days prior to that, all of that cold-packed snow that we had just turned to absolute mush. And then once it started raining, everything was plugged up. We had storm drains that we couldn't get to. I had to take a couple drivers off their routes and put them on curb inlet cleaning so that flooded inter... routes and put them on curb inlet cleaning so that flooded intersections could drain. The snow, I call it snow, it was really more like slush, was extremely heavy and really difficult to place, and all of our plow guards basically failed to work, just because it's so heavy, they were moving so slowly that everybody's driveway got bermed, which really should be a common occurrence, but we've kind of spoiled town, and now that we're using those snow gates, everybody expects us to use them in every driveway, and in an event like this, we just weren't able to. So followed by that, it got cold again, and of course, we did get all of the slush that we could off the road, but now it's frozen solid. And so barring us using our entire season's worth of mag chloride to try and, you know, get it freed up, we're going to have these snow piles for a while.
I'm not really quite as concerned with snow piles as I am with the state of the streets, particularly over by the high school, really concerned about the railway district, very concerned about the streets over by the, by the river, behind Glacier Bank, and over by the, the post office. All of those streets are so bumped up, iced, and they're virtually unpassable, even with studded snow tires, if you're going up any of the hills. And so that's my concern, and that's, some of the things have been expressed to me, and I'm, I don't have a good answer, and so what I'm hearing you saying is, we're stuck.
Yeah, I, the roads aren't great, I'm not going to lie to you, but I don't think they're impassable at this point. I have two vehicles that don't have winter tires, and I've been getting around town. I mean, these conditions aren't optimal, but they're not impassable like they were a week ago today.
Agreed.
So I-
Anyway, I, I will, I'm, what I'm looking for is some support here as to what we've got and what we're going to be able to do, and that's all.
I mean, our, our only option at this point is to go out with the, with the motor grader and put the blade down and start cutting from street to street to street, but the problem is, this time of year, you take every manhole, every valve box, and you start breaking up the asphalt, and so until it loosens up a little bit, it's going to be kind of rough out there.
Okay. Great, thanks.
That's all.
That's all I got.
Thanks, Frank. Ben?
No comments from me. Happy New Year.
Thanks, Ben. Rebecca?
Yeah, Craig, on the topic, we did get a letter that I had forwarded to you, and then the citizen was really happy with our response immediately afterwards, but it was around the school, and he was saying that the, the parking lots were being cleared by the school's contract, and do we have any ability to contract with other people during the, these really intense times where we have Christmas and high visitation and then weird weather, and is that just liability doesn't allow that?
Well, I mean, it, it would be an option that we'd have earlier in the year to, to contract with other snow removal contractors, but all of those contractors are busy, and they were working on, you know, work they already had under contract. We do work with a company to do alley snow removal, and he was just as busy as the rest of our crew, you know, during that couple-day period. I had a few people that commented on, you know, why is the city doing all these, you know, parking lots for the school and not doing the streets? Well, obviously, we're not plowing those parking lots, but the contractors that are working for, for the school were doing that.
And I just would like the citizens to remember, they can help out, too. So if you have a snow blower and a shovel, and you can look around your neighborhoods and help, I mean, we have bodies, we can do things, so. Anyways, thanks for doing everything you could. And then the other thing that people were talking about is the fireworks on New Year's Eve being illegal, and I wanted to ask the fire and police chiefs about, like, how do we, how do we, how do you want us to handle that? Because people are upset about it, that we're allow, that we're allowing fireworks on New Year's Eve, and I don't think we really allow them, I think they just happen, but.
Yeah, that's right. They are, excuse me, they are legal on New Year's Eve. We do our, certainly do our best to enforce that, but it's certainly call-dependent, and a lot of times downtown is where our efforts are focused on New Year's Eve, so that could certainly be part of it. But we did respond to a significant number of firework calls.
Do you think it was worse this year than usual?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it was worse. It seems to be pretty consistent.
Okay.
Year to year.
Yeah. Otherwise, I just wanted to send a personal thank you to Joey for being our librarian for so many decades. She was the librarian when I first moved here over a quarter century ago in this building, only the old building, and then also for Terry's work at the golf course. I remember when you came to talk once, and I didn't realize we trained 200 golfers a year, children, and you were talking about that, and what a legacy you're leaving behind. Both of, both of you guys are amazing, so thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Andy?
Yeah, just a couple of things, question for Dave Taylor, I think first, you know, for construction sites, we allow one four-by-eight sign for an entire construction project, all the subs, the contractor, and all of those people are allowed to be on that four-by-eight sheet. So every time I drive down Wisconsin and I look at 300 straight feet of Malmquist Construction advertising, I'm kind of thinking that doesn't really meet the code? Am I correct in that?
You are correct.
Okay. Have they been notified of that?
We can definitely talk to our code enforcement about getting on those sites.
All right, all right. Welcome back, Major. No. Then the other thing, we got a letter from Jenny Bevel, I believe it was on the 23rd of the month, talking about the new garbage cans, and I think I noticed it with my can, is those cans do freeze shut. The lids freeze them, and I take it out of my shop, and I put it out, and the water melts, and it gets dumped in the morning, and I go to get it in the afternoon, and you can't open that can. I mean, I can put it back in my shop, and in about a half hour, I can reopen it, and I think that's probably the problem she was having with it. I thought it was me, and I just didn't know how to operate it, but I flipped the letter about 2,000 times, and it still wouldn't open, and yes, I did have shoulder surgery this year, so I'm not as strong as I used to be, but, so I did figure it out, and I put it in the garage, and literally a half hour later, it opened just fine. So I think that's a problem, and I don't know, maybe ask the manufacturer, what, I mean, do we spray them with Pam or something? I don't know. I'm like, but it is a problem, I think, and I can see, for people that leave them outside all the time in the alley, they would have a difficult time getting it in these freeze-thaw conditions, so, I don't know, and somebody, maybe Craig, I don't know if you saw that letter, but might want to respond back to her and say that's what her problem is?
Yeah, we, we definitely can. I, I don't think I saw the letter, did it, was it in the packet, or?
No, I don't think I received the letter.
It came, I just think it came to the council, didn't it? Yeah.
I hit mine with a rubber mallet, if that makes any difference, when it freezes up, just, I just, yeah, you just have to hit it, and, and that breaks whatever ice is on the rim, but she's right, that they're, they're, they're unmanageable. I mean, the lid, the lids are so heavy-
Yep.
-that they're really, for an elderly person, that would be, it's pretty tough, or somebody with shoulder surgery, to lift that lid up.
I have to admit that it happened to me, too, so I decided that there are no bears in winter, and I put a little piece of wood so that it wouldn't go down, but in spring, I'll take it off and it won't freeze, and, yeah.
But yeah, I think like I said, her, her concern is, is right on the money, so I don't know what or how we deal with that, but it's something we should think about a little bit, I think, so.
I'll reach out to Kodiak, their representative, actually, local rep, is from Columbia Falls, and he said if there's anything that comes up, to let him know, so I'll let him know that we're seeing freezing during these, these weather events.
Since we're on the topic, I did hear from two people that live over, off of Iowa, that bears got into their cans this year, knocked them over and jumped on them, and it lifted the lid. And so I did watch the empty my can one day, and there's nothing special, it's just that lid is so heavy, when it gets tipped all the way upside down, that's what causes it to open. It just, it over, it overrides the latch that's there, so a bear can still get into those things.
They're bear resistant, not, I think, completely bear proof, is the intent.
Yeah, there, there is a little ball bearing in the latch mechanism, that when the can gets tipped by the truck, that ball bearing actually falls and opens it, it's not just the weight. I think the weight of the lid is intended to close it more properly than to open it, but yeah, as Dana mentioned, it's not bear proof. It's the closest thing to bear proof that we've found, but yeah, we'll definitely get in touch with Kodiak and see if they have any literature or suggestions to get out to the residents.
Anything further, Andy? Dana, did you want us to make our councillor appointment to the housing committee meeting this evening, or wait on that?
We'll put it on the next agenda, and I'll also contact all of the organizations to request their representative of choice so that you can also approve those representatives.
Okay. And then I did send you a response regarding the Haskell Basin meeting on Thursday night, did you receive that?
Today.
It was late today.
Yes, yep, I got it, and we'll be prepared.
Okay.
So we'll have stuff for that.
Great. Just a reminder, our council retreat is February 25th at The Lodge, and it was nice to meet Roxanna this evening, I can appreciate her CV here, and it reminded me, Craig, maybe when the weather improves, could we schedule a time during a work session to go visit the plant?
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be awesome. And maybe the water plant, too.
She will be delighted to entertain you guys.
Yeah, maybe the upgrades of the water plant as well.
Yeah.
I think that'd be fun.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Great. Anything further from council? How about staff? We are adjourned.